...be recorded.
For some reason, we don't have any power. You have?
I don't have one.
Power to yours? Yeah, mine's mine.
They're recording.
Yeah, okay. Okay, it's nine o'clock, we'll begin. Lander County Commissioners Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners, February twenty-fourth, two thousand and two. All times on the agenda are approximate. Consideration of these items may require more or less time than scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration. And the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussing discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has an opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included in the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be... That was my place. Heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board Meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. And at the discretion of the commission, please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation pursuant. NRS two forty-one oh one five three B two. Thanks for everybody coming to the meeting. Brian, you lead us into Platschek.
I plead the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence, please. Okay, Lander County Commission may break for lunch from twelve to one fifteen P M. Any agenda item may be taken out of order or may combined. Consideration of public body and items may be pulled or removed. Commissioner reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
Thank you. Yes, I did attend the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority Board of Directors Meeting on the eleventh of February along with J R. And there's a lot of things that are still going on with the legislature last year and all the different committees they've appointed and such. But I just wanted to let you know a couple of the things that are going on. Our Legislative Committee has been working very, very closely on so many of the things that pertain to water. But what we're actually doing is putting together a whole board statement with our position on these different things. And that includes everything from inter basin transfers, monitoring, management mitigations, county resource plans on the water, water banking, water conservation, the agriculture water right transfers, the lithium brine mining, and a lot of federal issues such as the public water reserves and such. So we are on top of it. It was an excellent meeting and we're trying to head off some of the things that our state water engineer is doing that we have mentioned on the previous meetings. Thank you.
I'm good, I don't have anything to report. I don't have anything to report.
I have nothing.
No.
I'll add to the Central Nevada Water Board.
I did ask one question in there that I was interested in. Up until these last snows, we had started at a hundred and forty percent of our rain, our annual rainfall. And we were down to seventy-eight percent before these last storms. So I'm sure it came back up a bunch. That was kind of interesting to me.
Staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended?
Everything I have is on the agenda.
Okay. Public comment for non-agendized items. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend, make comments, or on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments, three minutes. And again, at the discretion of the board, reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner. But public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment? Okay. Consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request the item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available. Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing and copies are available at a nominal charge. Number one, approve February twenty-fourth, two thousand and two agenda notice. Number two, approval of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting minutes. Number three, approval of January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes. Number four, approval of January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes. Five, approval of February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two meetings. And six, approval of payroll change requests.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve items one and two.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um... Now, on six, approval of payroll change request. Okay, we've done that. Do we have any?
There was, we didn't have any, so.
Okay. And... Okay. Commissioners, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the payment of bills. And we need to pull checks number two one four six oh seven, two one four six seven oh, and two one four seven forty-seven. I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we need to approve the checks two one four six oh seven, two one four six seven oh, two one four seven forty-seven. A motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain, they're made to my employer.
Okay. If there's no disapproval, I would like to move number six and number eleven up. My wife had hip replacement surgery yesterday, and I may need to leave on a moment's notice. But I do need to leave by eleven thirty because she has a doctor's appointment. So if we could get number six first? Rick? Morning, Rick.
Hello. Rick Hardless, Fire Chief, Battle Mountain Volunteer Fire Department.
Push your button.
Rick Hardless, Fire Chief, Battle Mountain Volunteer Fire Department. And I'm here to discuss purchasing a fire truck. It's a big truck, it's a ladder truck. We don't have one. We don't, our biggest manual ladder is thirty feet. And as you can guess, there's quite a few other buildings around here that are more than thirty feet. And there's no way it'll reach the third-story window of motel. The old courthouse. Lots of the older houses around town. We had one at one time. I don't know if you ever saw it, it was parked behind the sheriff's office for quite a while. But it was nineteen sixty-two Seagrave, and it's no longer in service and unserviceable. And it has been for quite a while. But since I took over, we've been inventorying what we need and what we should do. And this has come up as a major problem. I mean, we look at it like if we had a fire and people need to be rescued out of the third story of the local motel, we really have no option other than tell them to jump. You know, and I don't want to look anybody in the face, and I don't think you guys do either. And tell them we have no, nothing to reach it. What we would do is we would call envy energy and see if their truck was available to come. But that's not gonna...
Rick, I have a couple of questions. And one is, like you said, when they jump, I know you see that lots of times they have one of those bouncy things that they can jump on. We don't have anything like that in the interim at all?
I don't think you can even get those anymore.
Really?
Yeah. But the answer is no, we don't have anything like that.
Okay, 'cause I did wonder, I thought, at least we have something in the interim of... Okay, my other question was, where do we actually get this truck from?
Well, there's lots of truck dealers around.
No, I was looking at the transportation cost to get it here.
Oh, that, this particular one is in Houston.
Where?
Where?
Houston.
In Houston? For ten thousand dollars, can't we send one of our own employees over to pick it up and bring it back? I mean, I thought that was a lot to deliver a truck.
This is a huge, this is a big truck.
Do you have to see the elevator to operate?
Well, I'm sure, but I mean...
Not in the, in the fire service, no.
But if we were to do the transportation, would you?
Yeah, I'm sure you would. Yeah, you know, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, that was just something to, perhaps we can at least look into. That was, because I'm fine with the truck, and we need it, and we should have it.
Yeah.
But I thought if we can save, it seems like we could send somebody over there that can drive a truck back. And even with the gas and the time, it can't be ten thousand dollars. But I'm sure...
You know, you know, the ten thousand honestly was kind of, was not a hard estimate.
Okay, well, then we can just look into it while we're doing that.
I don't really know what it'd be, but, you know.
Okay.
We kind of guessed at that. And that came from the, from the dealer that has the truck. And...
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we...
Wait, I have a question. Hold on a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So should there be any added costs in there to when we get it, once we get it here, that is going to probably need to be repainted with our information on the side of it, that it probably already has?
That's minimal. I mean, we have decals and stuff to put on it. It will have to be equipped with some fire equipment. Because it won't have anything other than hand ladders that typically come with that truck. When we, if we purchase it, they want a twenty thousand dollar deposit, but they're not in a hurry. Their willingness to take our word for, we're gonna get it. And we'll go down and inspect it. And, you know, we want to make sure that that's what we're getting, is what we want and what we need, and it'll work. The twenty thousand dollars is refundable. There's, there's no guarantees on the truck. But they said that it has been meticulously maintained.
How old is it?
It's an oh-three. To replace that truck new, that type, they still make that model. It's one point six million in two years to get it. And this isn't the only one that's on the market, but this is, seems to be a really good one.
Now, this, this concern for a need came up when the White Knife Casino was gonna take place. And so I've been concerned about this third stories and stuff since I found out about that. And at first, I thought, you know, budget's just right around the corner. But if we need to nail this thing down now, then that's just the way it is. The way I understand it, we're saving one point two million dollars.
From a new one, yes.
A new one?
Yes.
And you guys can take this one and get it ready.
Yes, it'll come out of their shop completely P M, one hundred percent, everything working on it. It's part of the reason to go down and look at it.
Right.
And it'll be certified. That kind of a truck has to be certified for the aerials every year. So it'll come out of there with a new certification and be ready to go in service.
When you're evaluating this piece of equipment, are you going with miles or hours use?
Well, both. I mean, it's got twenty-two thousand miles on it and around two thousand hours, which is pretty low. I mean, this is not a truck that you use every, every time.
Right. Do we have a place to put it?
Well...
We're working, we're working on that.
You know, I've measured that door a hundred times, and it's got one inch to spare.
You were measuring it this morning, weren't you?
I was measuring it this morning. But I think if we could get an inch out of that door, which I think we could do, it'd be very comfortable.
Okay.
You know, so I guess the answer is we, are we gonna have to do anything? I think we need to shave maybe a half inch off the floor and a half inch off the head, which is just decorative stuff, or anyway. And/or maybe get smaller tires. I don't...
I wouldn't, yeah. Not when you're doing that big a rig, I'm sure they're low rated, so they wouldn't have on it.
Yeah. Wouldn't do as much good. I called the manufacturer, actually, and I asked them, and you can retrofit that thing with air shocks.
Because you can lower a air ride truck four inches, just dumping the air out of the bags.
They're supposed to be getting me a price on that. I haven't got that back, so that, that could be an additional cost. I can't imagine it being that much, you know?
The only thing that I would request, Rick, and I mean this from the bottom of my heart, please, get your inventory to us at budget when you find out what you need. Because I would like to start rotating for you guys and get absolutely the best that we can afford.
Well, we appreciate that.
Yeah, I... So...
This truck will do more than just firefighting and rescue. I mean, you see them all the time back east, they use them to rescue kids that have fallen through ponds and stuff. You know, and cross the river and things like that. It's just, it's one of those things that you're not gonna, you don't really need it unless you need it. And then when you need it, you need it.
Yeah, it's better to have it and not need it than need it and not have it, I agree.
And that's kind of the beauty of this truck, you know? It's so much cheaper than a new one. I mean, it'd be a hard pill to swallow to order a new one.
Yeah. One point six million, a lot of money.
Yeah.
Hey, I think Patsy had a motion?
Thank you. I did. I will make a motion that we approve the tower ladder fire truck for the Lander County Volunteer Fire Department in Battle Mountain in an amount not to exceed two hundred and five thousand dollars, which includes the fire truck and all delivery costs.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, that was Rick.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come to us budget with your list of replacement stuff?
Yeah, we're, we got a lot going on right now. So we'll, we'll make it happen. All right, thank you.
And the next one, I would like to move forward if we can, is number eleven. The, that's the plan. Whoever's here for that.
Derek isn't in the crowd yet.
I can't hear you.
Derek.
He should be on his way.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have Wood Rogers here yet.
Okay. Okay, then let's just go back down. Go back to number two. Number two. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, reappoint of one individual to serve on the debt management board, which currently has three openings, new terms from July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. And thank you, Louis, for, Louis Lanny, for volunteering again.
I'll make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Louis Lanny to serve on the debt management board, which is from, it'd be for a term of July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, thanks, Louis. Number three, for discussion, possible action to approve, disapprove, reappointment of one individual to serve on the Lander County Public Lands Use Advisory Commission, which currently has four openings, and a new term from July twenty, twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Again, Louis Lanny.
I'll make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Louis Lanny to the Lander County Public Lands Use Advisory Planning Commission from July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Again, Louis. Number four, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove appointment of two individuals to serve on the Lander Economic Development Authority Board, which currently has four openings, new terms from July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. We have John Shreve and Myra Wall. Thank you very much for volunteering.
I'll make a motion that we appoint, reappoint John Shreve to the Lander Economic Development Authority Board term from July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Patsy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need a motion on Myra?
I'll make a motion that we approve Myra Wall to serve on the Lander Economic Development Authority Board to run July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
A second? J R. seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Is Myra here?
Number five?
Who? Yeah, Myra.
Thank you so much, stepping up. We're pleased to have you.
Question on that, Bert, how do we, for these boards, do we, do we do anything outside of the paper to let people know we have, like, seats open? How do we advertise it so people know? I just know there's a lot of vacancies, so...
For the record, the clerk's office does the advertisement in the paper. And I'm not aware that we advertise any other way. I believe that's the only source that we use, but...
Yeah, let's get some more advertising out there.
Maybe we'll post it on social media and start putting out, it's like we do our job postings a little bit.
Yeah, I think we'll get more people to apply if we do that.
Okay.
Okay, for discussion by Robert Fran regarding the closure of I eighty for bridge demo at Immigrant Pass. Morning, Robert.
Morning, thank you, thank you for your time. Let me get one second to work the technology here. So I do it, open it up on this computer, and then you control, do you control the PowerPoint, or do I?
No.
Okay. Would you like me to stand here or at the mic?
Whatever you like.
All right, again, thank you, thank you very much for your time here this morning. What I wanted to present to you today is provide an update on our current project. We have a going over at Immigrant Pass, and in particularly, the event that's gonna take place June eighteenth from nine P M. to five A M., which is the closure of Interstate eighty. This closure, I feel's gonna have very much a direct impact here in Battle Mountain. So I've reached out to a lot of surrounding communities, talked to different cities and counties to provide this information, trying to get out in front of it before June comes around and we actually go to construction. So to give you a brief project background, this is N dot contract thirty-eight forty-nine. We've constructed a westbound truck climbing lane. We've, are in construction of the eastbound truck climbing lane. We're gonna resurface the roadway. We built a new structure at Immigrant Pass, which now means we have to demolish the existing structure.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I've driven back and forth on Immigrant Pass lately. You built a new bridge, and now you need to demo the old one?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, now I understand.
Yes.
And what was the date in June?
June eighteenth. Nine P M. to five A M.
Ooh.
So we're really trying to get out ahead of it.
Yeah.
Get the, get the notice out.
We'll be busy.
So the, the bridge that's gonna be demolished was constructed nineteen sixty-seven. They've replaced it with a modern structure to serve that immigrant maintenance facility and the adjoining residents that reside there. Just for visual aid, you can see on the screen there, I eighty looking east, there's the structure. The, there's a yellow sign, near the yellow signs, a set of structural columns. That's, those columns on the old bridge are essentially what's in the way to finish our eastbound truck climbing lane. Again, another picture looking west, kind of more of the same, but it gives you an idea of the structure we're talking about. And for anybody who's not familiar with the area, this is where the work will be taking place. Again, I can't stress enough, June eighteenth, nine P M. to five A M. And this closure was determined over a series of conversations and calculations and risk analysis that we had to close I eighty. There was a series of different modeling and techniques trying to utilize to remove the old bridge while diverting traffic to one side or the other. But the bridge and the engineers just could not come up with a confidence, safety factor to do that. Yes, sir.
Robert, what, okay, so if you're gonna start at nine P M., what time, do you, have you been with H P. And found out what time they recommend us to, where you're gonna shut down from?
So that's a great question. I get to the closure points here pretty soon. But to answer that in part, we are very restricted or constrained to the closure times. Eight hours maximum, and that is directed, if you will, from the Federal Highway Administration.
Yeah, I just, you know, if you're gonna start at nine, do we shut down the highway outside of Battle Mountain at seven? You know, that, logistically?
Logistically, we can't, because we can't, we have to shut down the highway at nine and reopen it at five.
Oh, it would have to be a volunteer basis. They'd have to pull in here and not travel on the highway.
Correct. So that's in part why I'm reaching out to these communities. Because you, while the impact here in Battle Mountain and the other...
The signs along eighty?
Yes, sir. So I will get, those are all great questions, and I hope to answer them all as I, as I move forward here. So here's, here's the old bridge that needs to come down. As you can see, there's four spans. And I'm not a bridge engineer, but my conversations with our structures division, it was explained to me that when, if they were to remove any one of those spans with traffic diverted to one side or the other, there was the risk there that the bridge would be very unstable and could come down on its own. And that was a risk that N dot was not willing to take. So that's ultimately where they came up with the solution to close the interstate. A little bit more of the same, here's the old bridge. If you're looking at the screen on the right side of those, on those subject columns, that's in the way of the truck climbing lane. Again, here's the structure that's coming down. Those columns are right there by the immigrant exit sign. And during this closure, obviously, we're gonna generate some debris with the demolition of that bridge. That debris will be staged off-site at the, at the off-ramp there, but will be removed at a later date. We were not gonna take time to remove the debris during this closure. Our ultimate goal is to remove the spans, get the interstate open. If we have to go back and do a single lane closure to remove the structural columns, we will. But the ultimate goal is to get the spans removed over the interstate. So N dot, with this, with this closure, we've, have a series of, a big network of signage that we're gonna use. We're gonna deploy, not only use our overhead message boards that are along the Interstate eighty corridor, but we're gonna deploy a significant amount of portable changeable message boards. And that's gonna be in collaboration with the Contractor Q and D Construction and N dot's maintenance forces. This, this slide here is, there's a lot on this slide, but it gives you an idea of how far we're... of how far we're reaching to notify voters. From points west, north and east, and even down south, we're gonna have signage along the entire corridor and areas coming into the state, particularly from the northeast side. Here's a little close-up, and this may help answer some of your questions, sir. Is the hard closure is gonna start here at Exit 231. That's where the interstate will be closed.
Okay.
The, uh, exit, up to Exit 233 could be local traffic only. And from 231 essentially to Exit 261, Beowawi, will be local traffic only. That will be another checkpoint. Both closure points on the west side here will, will be supported by law enforcement.
Is that between shifts for the mining?
It is.
Okay. Yeah, that's why you have the eight hours.
We have eight hours, and we are reaching out to the mining community as well. From my understanding, I'm not from Battle Mountain, I live in Elko, but that frontage road, from what I've been told, goes to or near all the way to Dunkie. So that will be open for local traffic, but there will be signs at the Dunkie, Argenta Interchanges notifying motorists that eastbound I-80 is closed. You can't go any further. The information on this slide, number five, is State Route 305 right here. And this is part of our, our network to get the message out there is we'll have some changeable message signs notifying motorists that this is their alternate route. It's gonna be quite the scenic route to get around if they choose to. And we not only plan to notify them of the alternate route, but when the next services are. Because there's, my, my concern was is motors from out of state may not be aware that the next services are 90 miles to Austin. And so we're, we're really trying to get the signage out there, having the correct messaging on the boards to, to help the traveling public make the best informed decision that they can. Here's the construction area, the Palisades Immigrant. So the, the second closure area on the east side of the project would be at Palisades. That's the last effort to turn around heading westbound. And that will be supported by law enforcement and then signage on, on the Palisades Road for those residents that live there. We have some information on this slide. Again, so the second closure, if you will, eastbound, we have 231. Now we're at 261, both supported by law enforcement and some signage in between. The State Route 306 will have some signage to notify, partly communicate with the mining community and the community of Cresta Valley. The rest areas will remain closed. Beowawi, the rest areas will remain closed. And I don't have any information on when or if those are gonna reopen. But we are, again, advising the motorists not to travel during this time, or if they choose to travel to take the alternate route. Or if they get caught in the closure, like you had alluded to, sir, from, if they're here and they get up there and it's closed at 9:00, we would advise the motors to park in designated areas such as chain-up areas, that sort of thing. And with that, we've also have began discussions on how we're gonna logistically support those areas with the, with providing porta-potties and whatnot for people who do get caught in it. And there will be many opportunities for them to turn around. But if someone does choose to stay and trucks get stacked up or what have you, there will be some portable facilities for them to utilize. Again, we're advising motors not to travel during this time, but should they choose so, this slide here kind of depicts what the alternate route is. And this is, uh, this is, you know, living in a rural area, this is the alternate route. It's, it's not a quick way around. But that's where we're gonna have the proper signage to notify them when the next services are and when the next commercial services are. Because what, we also don't wanna, we don't wanna have a solution and have a solution present another problem. So we don't wanna have a bunch of trucks head down towards Austin, and now they're all stacked up at Champy's trying to get fuel. That's gonna pose another problem. So we're really wanna get the message out there and let people know. Again, this is a little bit more of the same. So if we're here in Battle Mountain, I-80 will close at Exit 231. Up to 233 will be local traffic only. There will be signage in Austin, stabbing some of the similar messages, just opposite direction. And here's the closure on the westbound side. It'll close at Exit 279 in Carlin. And then the second closure westbound will be the Palisades Interchange. And we'll have the signage in Eureka for State Route 278. This, uh, this is a sneak peek, if you will, of the public flyer that we're gonna send out for distribution. This is just the map view of the, of the closure. So the highlighted area in yellow is the entire closure. It does not depict the, the secondary closures at Palisades or Beowawi, but the hard closures at Exit 231 to 279. When this flyer is finalized with our Public Information Officer Group, there will be some language at the bottom of it. It's gonna go out to, for mass distribution. And I would be happy to bring copies over here, send it electronically however we can get the information out there. And with that, I might add that our Public Information Officer Group is reaching out to the adjoining states of California, Idaho, Utah, and to utilize their messaging coming into our state. So with that, I wanna recap really quick. So take note, June 18th, 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. I-80 is closed from Exit 231 to 279. Local traffic only from 260, 231 to 261, and from 279 to 271. So I hope you keep all those exits straight, because I've been dealing with them for a while now. So I think I got them all right. But there's my contact information. Should anybody have any questions, please reach out to me. At this time, I will open it up for questions to the, to the commissioners, questions to the public, and I'd be happy to answer anything I can.
Robert, I just have one clarification, because I'm, I'm not following you with all of the exit numbers. But if I'm coming up 278 from Eureka, I can get on I-80 going east.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And if you, for example, resided in the Palisades area, you could go west. You could stop by law enforcement. They would check, make sure you are who you are and your residence where you say, and they would allow you to go to the Palisades, which then you would probably be checked again by the secondary law enforcement to get home. So, but going points east, you'll, you'll be fine.
Thank you.
Do they also have any questions?
Well, I, I appreciate this, and it, it sounds like you have everything covered. I guess what we need to do is puggle sides that live and hack out of this for our local residents.
Keep your fingers crossed. So my, my hope is that, like, again, like I said, we're working with our maintenance forces to get an inventory of all of our changeable message signs. The maintenance department here, we're gonna work with them. So my hope is, and we haven't quite figured out the logistics yet, but is to get all these signs staged well ahead of time and have some messaging notifying when this is gonna happen. And then when it does happen, that message, those messages could change to advise the, notify them of the next services and alternate routes and whatnot. But we have to be very careful on our language, on all this signage, not only with internally, but with the Federal Highway Administration. We, so our Public Information Officer Group is kind of working on all that stuff, so. But we hope to, as we are today and the other communities, just get out there in front of it, get out there early to let people know.
I appreciate you coming to tell us all this, Robert. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number seven, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, a home occupation permit application for Sheila Gonzalez DBA. Sprinkles by Sheila to operate an in-home mobile bakery located at 325 Buena Vista Drive, Battle Mountain APN 011-040-35 zoned A1.
Caitlin, I, I do have a question when you're starting here. Because we actually didn't have the, the meeting for our planning commission here, and it's putting everything on us. I'm going, we're looking to you, because this is really difficult. They're the ones that, that really vet everything for us, you know. So you said there was 12 letters that were, were sent out according to what we need to do to the residents, but was anybody at the meeting in case somebody came?
No. So since that meeting was canceled ahead of time, we weren't there. I wasn't there. But the letters were sent two weeks prior to, to that meeting. And they were sent certified to the neighbors within 300 feet.
Okay, so I'm saying, here I am, I get the letter. I don't, I don't respond in any written way, but I decided to come to the meeting, and I come to the meeting and it's canceled. How, how do we know how many might have come to that meeting? We don't?
She was there.
Beyond this meeting?
The appropriate question is that one. Have they been given legal notice that we're gonna decide this issue at today's meeting?
Yes.
And how many days' notice were they given?
Um, I, about a week everyone was notified. I notified everyone as soon as the planning commission meeting was canceled. I, I notified everybody that day, and I believe it was about a week that we had until this meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, that's what the concern is.
Yes.
Were they given legal notice that we're gonna decide the issue at today's meeting at this time?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's legal, Ted?
Yes. If they were given legal notice, it is.
That's why I was worried. Well, I, I tell you, I really think that these home occupations are really great. There's a kid I know in town that he started a little business and he's ready to go, leave the mines and get out on his own with, with his endeavor. So these things are really good, not only for the individual, but for the county. So I, I think it's a good idea.
Baker is good.
We don't have donors.
I would have brought cupcakes had I known.
Do we have a motion? Bert, you have a second?
Yeah, so Aaron and Caitlin and, you know, the whole staff on that side have, have been working really hard. I was kind of disappointed that we didn't have today to give to the, to the commission, because it's something that will be going before planning and zoning moving forward. It will be very similar to what we present to this commission when you guys decide on an item, except for it'll have further backup. It's gonna be a staff report that, you know, gives when, when the application was put in, who it was sent to, give them all the backup on every department that it affects and what their recommendations of each department comes forward. So it, it will kind of join up what this commission's doing and what the planning commission's doing as a better movement forward, kind of funneling it. The reason we haven't put this in place sooner is because a lot of this is hinging on some other items that are on the agenda coming up with, that are gonna affect planning and zoning and what they do and don't approve and, and how that works with our master plan. So we wanted it to, to flow with the master plan as well as with the commission and planning and zoning. So you guys, you guys will be seeing some of this in your backup in the near future, and planning and zoning will be seeing that as well as to all the people that are affected and, and the staff reports that give recommendations with NRS and everything else from planning and zoning to what our master plan is creating and how it affects it for what you, you do and don't approve. We're just shy of a week or two of having that done.
Nice.
Thank you.
I'm ready for a motion.
I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a home occupation permit application for Sheila Gonzalez DBA. Sprinkles by Sheila to operate in a home mobile bakery located at 325 Buena Vista Drive, Battle Mountain, Nevada, APN 011-040-35 zoned A1.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Good luck, Caitlin.
Remember fresh going. Warm, fresh stuff. Okay, number eight, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, a parcel map application for Monty and Kelly Price Trust and Richard and Marion Lawson Family Trust. This is a division of one large 641.49 acre parcel into two parcels. Parcel A, 323.62 acres, and Parcel B, 323.61 acres located within a portion of Section 3 Township 34N and Range 43 EP APN 010-100-05. Boy, tell me about this.
So as it says on the agenda item, this is 641 acres. This parcel is located north of town off of Eisenhood Road. And on the map, I did notify the landowner because the parcel is incorrect under county treasurer's certificate. So if this is approved, it would be conditionally approved based on that they fixed that APN on the Mylar map before.
It's out there where Monty moved to?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So this would be conditioned?
Yes.
Any questions?
So, so the motion should have the condition in it.
Of the APN number. Okay.
And so the APN number is listed correctly on your agenda item. It is just, there's a typo error on the map itself.
Okay. Ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve a parcel map application for Monty and Kelly Price Trust and Richard and Marion Lawson Family Trust. This is a division of one large 641.49 acre parcel into two parcels. Parcel A being 323.62 acres and Parcel B being 323.61 acres. It's located within a portion of Section 3 Township 34 North and Range 45 East, APN 010-100-05.
One second. Okay, Brian made a motion. JR seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
And just so the clerk's office won't get the signed copy until we have the correct map, so.
Okay, okay. Number eight, discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove parcel map application for M77 Holdings LLC. This is a division of one parcel into two parcels. Parcel A being 20.01 acres and Parcel B being 461.99 acres located within a portion of Section 11 Township 32N and Range 44E, APN 010-260-29. Where's, where's this at?
So this is, um, right off of Allen Road.
Okay.
Let me turn the map here. And they're splitting, I believe if anyone is here or on the phone from M77, they may be able to help explain a little bit. And do you guys have this map in your backup? So Allen Road is down on the bottom, and they're splitting a little rectangle property, which is Parcel A.
Can I see that?
Uh-huh.
So what piece are they, what piece is it? Where's Myla? Where is Myla, Bert? I think that that is directly across from Campbell's property. There's, here's Gary Campbell. We're coming up Allen on the left. And this is directly across from, it looks like the base of his property.
Okay, so that's Allen Road, and that's going towards the desert.
This is, yeah, this is Allen Road. That's headed towards the desert. And this, this right here is actually the power line running through all of the bridges.
Right, right. Now this line here is Colony Property?
Correct.
Okay, what, do you know what they're gonna do with that?
I don't. But I, but I do know that they're within the minimum subdivision of the 20 acres of Smallville.
Okay. Any questions on this? Okay. Motion time. Motion time.
I'll make a motion to approve a parcel map application for M seventy-seven Holdings LLC. This is a division of one parcel into two parcels. Parcel A being twenty point zero one acres and parcel B being four hundred and sixty-one point nine nine acres located within a portion of section eleven township thirty-two north and range forty-four east A P N zero one zero dash two six zero dash two nine.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's passed unanimously. Okay, we have now ten.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have a presentation by Erin Martinez of A M Engineering concerning Austin realignment and then discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove a proposal from A M Engineering, Marcus Albright Coffing to finish the project. Take it away. You guys are from the attorneys?
L K is, works for A M Engineering and this is Mr. Lance Earl, our legal expert on the record.
Okay.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Again, Erin Martinez, A M Engineering, thank you guys very much for the opportunity to speak today. This project is not such a great topic, to be frank. So, you know, it's an absolute pleasure to have the opportunity to be a part of the project, kind of a positive note.
This is Austin, we can't hear him.
How about now?
It's better.
Again, the positive note to this project is this team feels like we can absolutely get this done. And to kind of start off, the contract was built with a performance clause in there, so I don't know if you folks saw that. So we have some serious skin in the game from a financial component. So we're trying to lay it out on the line for you as well. Like I had said, this is Mr. L K Stevenson, he works for my firm. He's been in a limited capacity over the last year as he's transitioning. He currently works for the Department of Interior, Fish and Wildlife. So he's a certified federal land surveyor and he's also an army veteran. So we sure appreciate him on board and, and he's our P L S expert and certified land surveyor for this project to assist in the B L M and U S Forest Service component and oversee the entire project. This is Mr. Lance Earl and he is our legal expert. Lance, would you mind saying your firm's name so I don't mispronounce it?
Yeah, Marquis Arboc, now Marquis Arboc Coffing. From, we're in Las Vegas with offices also in Reno.
And Mr. Earl was selected to be a part of the team because we simply need a legal expert that can help us in getting this project adjusted properly. Kind of off the cuff, the, the project team is comprised of my firm, a legal expert and a sub consultant that will be seeing, overseeing all of our work that will pay out of our fee. So with that said, I'm going to kind of go into the proposal a little bit and discuss with you kind of the status of the project. So as part of this proposal, what we were asked to do is look at the existing information to try to understand the current project, or did you have a question? To try to understand the current project and the status of the existing data. And I think that's like the biggest component here is, you know, there's a lot of money that's been out to create this information. So obviously we're trying to utilize it, leverage it in order to save Landor County costs and money. And with that said, we went through a fairly extensive digital and limited hard copy file. Within that file, we tried to break down basically what's been done versus not done. So if you can see this exhibit here, essentially the areas in gray are, are areas that had been addressed by the previous firm. Areas in red, we have zero information on. The areas in green are the U S Forest Service or B L M land that we also do not have any information on with the information that was provided to us. So that said, kind of looking at it in layman's perspective and breaking it down by area, I have all the left maps listed there for you and you can see that essentially roughly sixty percent of the town has been addressed and the remaining thirty to forty percent of the town has not been touched or addressed in any form that we can see. That being said, with the data that has been addressed in the gray area, there is some honest work there most certainly. My field crew went out and tried to locate how many pins are in the ground, how many P L S caps are in the ground. And what we were able to find is it's a limit of limited nature. There is not a lot of hard set P L S caps in the ground because obviously no maps have been recorded. So they are not going to set those P L S caps until a map had been recorded. That has not occurred to date. So we didn't find too many P L S caps out there. We did find about a hundred and fifteen what we call sixty D nails, which are a nail with a flagging on it. And it appears that they were working with the landowner saying, okay, you know, Mr. Smith, here's your property corner. This is where we're thinking it's going to be. And they were setting those sixty D nails throughout the town to try to work with the residents so they could understand visually where their boundary was going to be. So we found about a hundred plus of those and I'm sure there's more. There's quite a bit of snow out there right now, so we were limited on what we could obtain. But in reality, maps A through K has been discussed many times at length. There's honest work there and I'm not going to lie about that. There, there's some good work there and it can be leveraged and we took that into serious consideration. As L K will tell you, you know, as, as, as an engineer and surveyor that has to take the ownership of that data, we're going to have to go through every one of those meets and boundaries. We're going to have to look at every parcel even though there is information there because we are ultimately being asked to take ownership over. And from a long-term liability perspective, Landor County wants us to do our job right so we don't have these long-term lawsuits lingering later on because we didn't, you know, close our boundaries properly or we overlap boundaries. And so I'll kind of get into some of that overlap. As an example, some of these maps were developed on different basis of bearings, meaning if I look at property boundary for say Mr. Smith, it should be a certain bearing of that line. But when I look at Mr. Smith's line in another map, it's a completely different bearing. And so that really concerned us from a map to map perspective because it just shows that they're not adjoining in a way that's geometrically closing. And that's an issue when it comes to what we're trying to do. Some of the maps closed fairly well. We went through and redrew every one of these maps. And what we found is some close well, some do not jive with the other maps. So, so that is an issue as well. That being said, the information that we were provided seems like it's missing information. And, and how I can tell you that is in the, the digital world of our drawings, there's external references within those drawings. Those, we call them X refs. Those external references point to other drawings. And we were not provided probably, I think, several of those. So there could be additional information that we're not being privy of. But most certainly we went through every file that was provided and this is the information that's there. So from a field perspective, our crews are going to be required to go out and frankly, resurvey the entire town of Austin. From what we call a planometric survey component, we do not have very much information when it comes to existing fence lines, existing buildings. And those are all issues when we're trying to create a boundary. If I don't know where the building is, then I don't know if he's encroaching on right of way or where that building is or how those fence lines lay out. And so from a field perspective, the base map that we've been provided does not really show any of those features. So unless there's more information to be obtained, we do not have any planometric survey really. We do not really know where any or all of the buildings are located. And those are kind of the things, and Legal can speak to this further, that really define a property. When we start talking adverse possession and things like that, these folks have been occupying this line for X amount of years. And so they're anticipating that as their property. And so we as surveyors need to then replicate that based on those boundaries and, and that adverse possession. So we're trying to, the reality is, is I have to go shoot every fence corner and I have to shoot every building to some degree. We'd like to work with the assessor, please.
I have a question. The, the land and that we're talking about in, in Austin, do the people own the mineral rights?
Okay, would you like to speak to that?
I think it'd be varied, wouldn't it? By D, there, there might be some folks in there that do have mineral rights.
There is the exception to the rule, but the rule is that, no.
Okay, because I remember the first time this came up and Patsy just looked at me and, and I knew that it was a real mess down there. And my thought was that people were concerned a foot this way, a foot that way because of minerals. That's, so if they don't own the mineral rights, then they're just laying claim, claim to the surface.
That's correct. And, and there is significant mineral load claims that are overlapping and are very part of the biggest concern I'm sure L K has is, is the current information on those is very sparse.
Just a, a quick clarification for me. I do remember that several Mylars, several, like two, three, four, were notarized and signed at one time. Is it my understanding that none of those have been recorded, so they're zip two?
Well, the, the only one that we were able to find that was never kind of presented as part of the maps A through K, years ago, a ninth merger was recorded, which is the only map we were able to find. And that's this one right here off of fifty, on the north side of fifty called the ninth merger. That map has been actually recorded.
Yeah, one, one Mylar, that's all.
That one small map, yeah, it's a very limited map set. I think it's just one or two parcels. I don't know if they had some business dealings that required clear title immediately. So somehow that was orchestrated, I think in two thousand and fourteen, but I might be mistaken.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. So again, I'm trying to convey how important it is for this existing information because it's, it's kind of the workload that we're being asked to do and I think that's important, okay?
Okay, the other clarification we need is, and I know this is for the residents of Austin too, we are doing this for roads, we are not doing it for two individuals.
I'm sorry, Ms. Patsy, will you say that again?
We are doing it for our roads.
Yes.
The county, not two individuals. So if two, two individuals have a problem between them, that's civil. That isn't anything we're going to handle and that keeps coming up too. So.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the approach right now is to realign every boundary in Austin, right? And with that, the right of ways that are dedicated to.
Every, every bounty, including the residential ones, why are we doing that?
It would have to in order to allow for the give and take that is going to have to take place from people that have homes that are sitting on county road easement.
Right.
And people that have, the county roads go through their, their personal property. So there has to be a give and take and a realignment, which should in, in all reality, settle some civil kind of discourse that's going on because then they have real property lines that they can actually address with.
What I'm saying is that we've got the roads on the outside, but here sits our two residents right here and they have a problem with how far it goes. We are surveying that for them too?
We have to survey the whole town, I believe. I believe Erin will get further into that, but yes, we have to survey the whole thing.
Here's a prime example.
Because that wasn't the original when we started out.
Well, that's, I believe that's, that's been the, that has been the, it's to make this all real property and that was the sole purpose of doing this from the beginning, is my understanding.
My understanding was the roads and the.
Well, the roads were a big part of it because we have no, we have, that, that kind of is, is another catalyst to it.
Well, if we're stepping in and doing absolutely everything, is that what Summit was doing too?
Correct.
And that's what maps A through K currently are.
That, okay, well that explains a lot with where the problems were.
And Ms. Patsy, here's a great example of that right here. You can see, I'll move my mouse around there for you, bear with me. So this is an existing road currently in Austin. And, and, and I couldn't tell you exactly the name off because my map is so small, I apologize. But essentially you can see that road as it's currently outlined in this map just ends arbitrarily. And those are the issues that are currently happening is the, the red, you can see the, the original town layout, for instance, on this Broad Street, was intended to be exactly like this with twenty-five by hundred foot lots and then another road. Well, in Austin, it being such a, a mountainous town, they put the roads where it made sense to be able to put a road. So you can see this, this, this existing road here is, is not following the original Broad Street intention. So what we actually have is a series of roads that have sliced through or occupied land that may not necessarily have been original county right of way or the intended right of way. And that's where we come into the adverse possession components and, and really starting to realize that the, that the town map as originally outlined is, is nowhere near that current view. So, so in order for, to Landor County to establish right of way, they would need to establish the adjoining parcels to coincide with that right of way. And that's where the issue then comes that all the parcels in, in Battle, or excuse me, in Austin are unable to obtain clear title for the most part. There is few that are and that is the issue at hand. And, and correct me again if I'm wrong, but the issue at hand is there's a lot of folks suffering that are unable to get clear title because their boundary does not reflect their current D doc documentation. And so where we're trying to come in is to really silence that and get clear title for every three hundred and thirty-nine to three hundred and seventy parcels in Austin. It's four hundred and twenty-five total acres for every parcel.
Oh boy.
We're going to need some help with the assessor's office and they are not in here and we hadn't really asked about that. But we're hoping to do a joint thing where they might be able to re-fly Austin as well to kind of help us with some of that so we can get an updated aerial imagery and potentially that could help them on their assessment purposes. But we're looking for Landor County to help us with the flyover component and that would finish out our field survey, planometric side of things.
Okay, let me ask a legal question then. Gentlemen, in our master plan, the information has been taken mostly from census, which of course we know hasn't always been correct. When I look at Austin and some of their information, it's like they claim we have a hundred and one vacant houses and, and a hundred and eighteen people, you know, and things like this, which, which we know. I mean, they're phantom, they're phantom houses and we know it hasn't been updated. But, but when the people do the, the research, that's what they have to take it from. Would something like this be able to trump that so we actually could give the correct number of homes, et cetera? Because the thing I'm concerned about isn't just our county, but other counties run into the same thing with, with their censuses. So they have tackled it in many different ways. The biggest reason is because of economic future. I mean, when people look at this to invest in, in a county and they say, well, look, you've done nothing but lose people forever and ever and ever and this stuff isn't even right. Well, how can we correct that since we're going to all this expense and trouble? Can we use that information to correct any of the legal documents like our master plan and such?
So can I make a quick, before, the, the one thing that this will do is, is give people the ability to list their property and sell it as real property, which is part of the hangup that a lot of Austin has.
No, that was the reason for doing this.
Correct. But I, but I just want to make sure to point that out before, because maybe the question you're asking in Legal can answer that maybe a little bit bigger question. But, but without being able to move any property, it makes it really hard to fill any vacant homes.
Okay, but I'm not concerned about the residents selling, that's, that's the main reason we're doing this. But I'm saying, along with that, could we benefit the town of Austin by giving it the correct information on the different places instead of following the census?
So again, this is Lance Earl. You raise a very interesting question and it's part engineering, part legal, part public works. But the fact is, if we do, you know, what Mr. Martinez is talking about is essentially putting in master plan. We're mapping, we're creating subdivision maps, we're redoing the subdivision maps. By doing that, you'll know where every single A, assessor parcel number is, every address is and what it might, may not be within the scope that it's originally contemplated. Our intent will be at some point in time to send notices to everybody about, maybe we have a meeting. Here's what we're trying to do. And you, I think, will be able to help identify people who are residents and living there and people who are not, in part maybe because of the response you get. If we send a certified letter and it gets returned undelivered, you may know that someone's.
If we send a certified letter and it gets returned undelivered, you may know that someone's not there, that house might be vacant. We've looked here, you may find where you think there's a house, and right now, it's just a vacant lot. That house may be gone.
Yes.
By, with the survey and the things that we're talking about, while that may not be part of the original scope, I think it will be easy to identify a number of those, if not all of them, as to, to help you know which houses, you know, who's living here and who's living there, which houses are no longer have a building or structure on them, you might be able to do that.
Okay, we, we can do that, but I'm saying with you folks, with our legal people here, as part of, you know, the, the whole, the whole project, basically, is there something that, that you can do, or we can do, to make this a legal part, and change the census for once and for all? Because some of it is phantom.
To change the census is, is another question that might, we need to get back to you on, but I do think that there is a byproduct of this work that's, when completed, I think can coincide exactly with what you're shooting for there.
Okay, and we do have a legal process of way of actually making it real, instead of just saying, yes, we know it's true, I, I want it true on the statistics.
I see.
And how we get that corrected.
We'll have to look into the census side of things.
You understand where I'm coming from?
I do understand.
It's our economic future.
Right, when we talk about census, we talk about those numbers, I don't know that there's a legal basis for how that gets changed, but what you're asking for is, will the information that we're working in now provide you the information or the data for you to be able to go and, and fix that census issue?
Like to the university and tell them the adequate, yeah.
Yeah, here's what it really is, because we've done all the surveying, we've identified all this, and I think you might find that much of the information we have is helpful, even though we're dealing with probably purely engineering and, you know, legal description issues, I think the data you have may be very helpful in being able to do that.
Well, I just wonder how you're going to convince somebody that believes that their property is their property, and now all of a sudden, you're going to come in and say, hey, we need to slice twenty-five feet off of the corner. You know, that, that's my thought, I, I mean, I understand legal, but the people that'll be affected understand it.
No, you're exactly right.
That's, that's where Donnie comes in. You mentioned public works, and he'll go down there and.
You're good about it.
We've got a big guy for the job, Donnie.
Mr. Clark, if I can touch on that a little bit, you bring up a really good point, is part of a high priority on this project, and that's kind of why the team is assembled the way it is. I think before the surveyor was the contact and the P R, and this has been broken up into a much larger team. Legal is basically going to take that point, they're going to be the primary and really only point of contact for this project, and we're hoping to establish a better relationship on a personal level, because we understand that, hey, no one wants to tread on you, no one wants to take your land, that is not what this is about. This is about getting clear title, so you can sell your land, and hopefully, in the end, be more, well, sellable and frankly, more profitable. So, so with that in mind, our, our team is trying to approach it really from a personal level, and I could dive into that process a little bit. Right now, we've got three public meetings scheduled, and with those meetings, we'd have flyers being mailed to those folks prior, we would have the town meeting, and then we would have kind of a, a meeting minutes and scope sent out after that. And we're really hoping to pick this off in that approach. Just to kind of give that in a nutshell, the idea is, is hoping that we can try to satisfy as many maps as we can with getting as many people on the board as initially and work with them in a, in a one-on-one basis.
Bert, make sure that you remind us when they're going to go down there. I know we can't have three people at these meetings, but I would like to be there, I know Patsy will be there.
You bet.
So with that, some critical items that, I'll let L K speak to. Right now, we have some high priority B L M and U S Forest Service land that needs to get addressed immediately, because it's a two to five-year process. Okay, would you want to touch on how we're going to address that?
Yes, in dealing with the federal government, of course, it's a bit of a tangled sometimes, and it's a very time-consuming process. Right now, I can tell you that Department of the Interior centralized all of their appraisers into one office, which means they're not really accessible to any office any longer, they kind of work on their own, it seems. Right now, we're looking at six months to twelve months to get an appraisal on a piece of property that the federal government has an interest in, either in exchanging or in, in transferring, either acquiring or disposing of. So that's something to keep in mind, that there are going to be factors beyond the control of, of this firm in this county that are going to impact the, the survey in some places. Now, with the Bureau of Land Management and the U S Forest Service, there are remedies for some of the isolated parcels and some of the slivers of land that, that are, you know, prevalent throughout this project, and we can use maybe the, the nineteen thirty-eight Small Tracks Act to achieve remedy for that. In some cases, the federal government is going to require value-for-value exchange, which might, might very well confuse the issue or prolong the issue. But, you know, looking at some of these, there's a parcel twenty-six on one of these maps that really is about the width of a bowling ball. And I think we could be able to get the, the Bureau of Land Management or the Forest Service, depending on the owner, to, to cede that land, but that's going to require some coordination and some disbursement with, with those folks. And as we discussed earlier this morning, you know, there's always a possibility of congressional remedy, you know, that these two hundred square foot parcels might just be, you know, if, if, for example, B L M of the Forest Service is reluctant to, to patent that, those lands, then maybe we could get some form of congressional remedy. I recently worked on a project in Lincoln County, where the federal government gave them some land to expand their, their landfill, so it is possible to do, so that's something we might need to, we might need to consider down the road.
Thank you, okay. Just for the commissioners, this kind of on the northerly end of Austin is a, a U S Forest Service slash B L M land, it's kind of questionable as to exactly who owns it. And then there's some land off to the, the far southeast, which is this sliver here, and also some of this area here where the no data is, is currently laid out. So those are some of the areas that we're talking about in terms of the B L M and U S Forest Service. Like L K said, it's sporadic, when you look at their map, like he said, there's little sections, two hundred feet sections here and there within the town, that are underlaying under, you know, somebody's house or parcel, that need to be addressed in order to obtain clear title, and that's kind of the root of why we are where we are right now. So with that said, that is a big item that the commissioners need to be aware of, and it's something that's outside, I think, of my performance clause in the agreement, as there's things outside of our control, and we're going to gun down every road to get them all done, but there could be, I mean, the B L M could say, no, we're not going to give you any of those parcels, and so that's why you see in the proposal that there are potentials for some things to not actually ever be recorded, but I, I don't see that being the case, I do see it all being feasibly done. So with that said, that takes us into the recordation side of things, and I'll let Mr. Lance Earl kind of discuss that from a legal standpoint, as to how we would plan to record the parcels and what that looks like.
With the engineering, maps are going to be prepared, subdivision maps, plat maps that will then be recorded, but with each of those, the map itself doesn't necessarily create the vesting. So what would be necessary is with the surveyor to provide a legal description of meets and bounds for each of those parcels. You could then coordinate a conveyance, and some of it may be small, you know, it might be a foot of property, but simply to have, create a situation where parties can have deeds recorded that essentially amend the property lines to match the legal description of the amended map. And that's how we would do that. Ideally, you do it, for example, if someone has been living in a property for twenty years, and the fence line is where they, you know, you think your fence line is where your property boundary is, if it's over two feet, adjusting it consistent with that, that fence line makes everybody happy. It makes your neighbor happy, it makes you happy, and it allows you to then be able to sell your land, to be able to finance your land, because you have a legal description that matches where you are, you don't have encroachments, and that's part of the process that we would look at. I think a lot of this is, in some respects, it sounds common sense, in part because you understand it, but it makes common sense, and I think as a result of that, a large number of residents in Austin will see the benefit of doing this, so it will avoid some of the potential conflict that you have if parties ended up in a dispute with each other about where my fence is and where my property line is.
What about, the gentleman kept repeating over and over and over about the probate cases, about the probate cases, and they, they couldn't get through people to open the probate to be able to deal with that stuff, is that something that you're going to be able to do a lot easier than the way he made it sound?
Perhaps. Probate is. Ah, bless you for that question. Probate's an interesting animal, but for every estate, it makes sense to fix whatever property you have, because in, in probate, you're trying to get rid of property usually, and if you can't do that, then you're stuck with not being able to do anything with that land. So trying to track down heirs, or trying to figure out how that gets done, is an interesting problem. But to people who, you know, family descendants, it makes sense to have their property in a situation where they can probate it when it's time.
What a mess.
Yeah.
I mean, this is.
That's an understatement.
This is, you know, like I said, the first time this was talked about, I looked at Patsy, and, you know, she kind of rolled her eyes, and I knew then that, oh, this, this is really unique for most towns, but not for rural Nevada mining towns?
No.
Are there any tunnels in Austin?
Yes.
I'm sure there are. There are? I know when I taught in Tonopah, the kids would raise hell on a Friday night and go down into tunnels and disappear until Sunday.
We have most of them closed off, and of course, the one at the end of town fell through, actually, a couple of years ago. Yeah, that was right on Highway fifty. Right, right at Champy's, right there.
Do you have a plan?
So anyway, yes, there are tunnels underneath the town of Austin, but I, hopefully, we won't be running into those types of things.
Please, a couple of things that I'd like to leave you with is, so as legal touched on, you know, we're, we're hoping to address these maps as one-on-one as possible in order to get them recorded. There's several items that we've talked about on here in terms of possible recordation approaches, and we're really just trying to pick it off in the easiest fashion, working with everyone personally, and these other remedies would come at a future date. So in terms of how we record the maps, we're going to approach it as it's currently outlined in the merger, reset division approach, and then if those become unfeasible, ultimately, we may be coming back to you with some additional recommendations that the commission will need to make a decision on. You know, when we start talking about inverse condemnation, eminent domain, anything like that, you know, the commission will be ultimately the one that will tell us what they would like to do. So you'll be fully involved in that decision-making process as we go forward.
Yeah, my concern was, you know, that, an update schedule, so it sounds like you got that covered.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So with that, I'll be happy to open up any more questions for anybody.
Aaron, if you could touch on the timeframe of kind of what you see this being done in, and then also, Aaron is putting some skin in the game, if you guys read through that, if you don't mind laying that out.
Absolutely, so right now, what you're discussing is the performance clause I talked about. Right now, that performance clause says if eighty percent of the properties are not recorded within two years, there'll be a hundred thousand dollar penalty. That's a one-sided performance clause, there's no plus side to it from our end, it's simply, if, if we don't achieve it, we lose money, if we do achieve it, we just go on with our current contract agreement. That said, we're hoping that eighty percent of the town will be recorded within two years, that is a hard, a hard set that we're shooting for, and, and in all reality, we're hoping the entire project is solidified within the two-year spectrum.
There was a caveat on that, though, like, like he just said, with, as far as dealing with the federal government, B L M and the Forest Service, that could take longer.
That's right.
So that was an exception, okay.
There will always be exceptions.
He said eighty percent, yeah.
Eighty percent, so those ones, those exceptions are part of that twenty, I think, and we're all the hard eighty regardless of anything, we're, we're hoping that's going to be the case. So I hope that touched on your timeframe.
Okay, so next, Ms. Earl. We, if we approve this, it goes with the contract, right? So we say we approve it for a contract, and that comes back before us, right?
And I'll work with, with two of these gentlemen here on that conference.
Well, I, I think it's really an impressive team, reading through the resumes. Hopefully, we can get this, get this done.
Thank you, Commissioner. If I could just leave you with one final notion, I just want to make it clear to everybody, there's two components outside of this you need to be aware of, and you need to be discussed with your legal at later time. One is a contingency fund to address any of the issues that may arise through litigation or future, and the second one would be, there's a title component to this, so right before we perform recordation, we're going to be bringing on a title company, they would actually then research everything that we've done, and hopefully obtain title insurance for every parcel that we record. So that part of this process that you need to be aware of is, Lander County would be not only be responsible for the legal fees associated with this project, but they would be responsible for the contingency fund that may arise in, now, in thirty years from now, and the title insurance component, so make sure you're aware of that.
So Lander County will be paying for the title insurance for every piece of property?
Why wouldn't?
I mean, title insurance is expensive.
Maybe legal can clarify.
I think what he's, I, I think it's probably better to characterize this as, I don't know that, for, for your properties, yes. I think what we want to do is make it available for everybody to be able to acquire that.
Okay, that's, I like that wording.
In other words, I don't know, and we can talk, I don't know, I don't mean to misspeak if that was the intent. The idea is not that you would pay to insure every parcel, but the ability to put it in a position where someone can get title insurance.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
That's what I think should be the goal.
The, the purpose for yours has been to make it available.
Yes.
And if that's accomplished, then, then I'd say bravo, you know, that's.
Well, how it's worded on the contract, title insurance to be paid by Lander County.
We'll fix it.
Yeah, we'll have to.
If made available, right, is what you'd like to have in there?
Except for Lander County's.
Right, well, of course, on our own property.
Yeah, there will be a few touch-ups, obviously, this is the, the rough draft coming to you guys, and then we'll be back, and after legal looks at it on our side, and, and we'll be back with the final number with everything else inclusive to, to get this board's approval, and like Aaron said, it'll be a step-by-step process, they're going to be in front of you guys with a lot of different things, and needing your approval to move forward on them in different directions.
Okay, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion. That Lander County enter into a contract with Aaron Martinez of A and M Engineering and Markey Aubach Coffing for the Austin realignment and to finish the project, and come before us with the contract.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
This is, this is so sad to think that, that our county is in this position after all the time and money we have spent, but it's like I said, when we actually decided to go a different way. We've got to bite the bullet, it's, it's something we need to finish and complete, the residents of Austin deserve that after everything we've gone through, and it's just time to cut your losses and start new and get it completed, so thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, thanks, Chris.
I appreciate that, too, and a contract that you wrote that puts the pressure on you, thank you. That's stepping up.
We're not here to waste your time, that's for sure.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
They're going to take a break, ten minutes.
Muted.
Okay, we're back, folks.
This conference will not be recorded.
And I just spoke with my wife, and I have to leave at eleven o'clock, so I want to get this started. For updated discussion, possible action to approve, disapprove the proposed draft mask plant, to give feedback, modify, hand or delete proposed language in the draft to provide future guidance if necessary. Good morning.
Morning. How are you guys?
Good.
Do you guys want to kick it off, or you want me to just jump in?
Oh, I apologize.
So, we do have the, the rough draft, this is the reason that we've, I wanted to have this meeting, I don't see anybody else here to, to chime in, so I'm, my assumption. I don't see anybody else here to, to chime in, so I'm, my assumption is that they must be fairly happy with the product that, that's sitting here. But if there's any concerns, we want, we want to try to wrap them up now. And, and like Derek said, and, and we'll probably touch on later, is that it's a living document. So as we come across things that are, are out of place, we can come back before this commission and modify them. But the hopes are to get as many things in place and have a, a solid structure to follow as possible. So I'll let, I'll let Derek kind of run away with it and tell you guys what changes we have made. If he has any concerns or anything that, that maybe we should look at, and Caitlin can do the same.
Thank you, Derek Kirkland Wood Rogers. We are the consultant hired to help you guys with the master plan. Happy to say we're finally made it to the, to the finish line here. And so I think just real quick, I'll just kind of go back through, and then we can kind of go section by section or however you guys want. And we can just kind of talk about any questions, comments you have. But at this point, this is pretty much final draft barring any, you know, small comments or final comments that the commission or planning commissioner or staff has at this point. But really, what we try to do with this master plan is just make it really easy to understand and follow. We took a lot of the old information from the last master plan and updated a lot of that information. We've been working with Lura, the assessor's office, to really update some of that mapping. I think we'll have between now and the final one, we'll have one more push of GIS data that we'll update into that. But our goal following this process is to move right into some of the zoning code updates. And so this is really our foundation, kind of moving forward with that. And with the zoning code, we, we anticipate doing a lot, kind of a similar, trying to make things easier to understand, just easier for people to understand what, what the county's goals are for the county, what the policies are. And then into the zoning code, kind of what those development standards are and some of those different things. And so really just kind of, I hope that you guys felt this was a lot easier read than prev, previous. And we just really try to keep it in organization that, you know, establishes the goals and policies upfront in every chapter, as those are the most important element of the master plan. And then with some of the future stuff, just kind of identifying what some of the future, future items are going forward as part of this master plan. And then just kind of establishing some of those baselines in terms of information and data that was collected as part of this process. And with that, I'll leave it up to you guys on how you want to do this. But usually, we will go through kind of each, start with each chapter and, and see if there's any comments or anything, questions I can help you guys answer at this point.
Okay, so the first, the first chapter?
Is executive summary? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
We're doing that?
It's just easier than we, I can take notes and that way we can make sure that for each, each chapter, we reflect any comments or questions that you guys have.
Okay, yes, I do have in that one. On page four, under government. The second paragraph there, under government, way down the last few sentences. It says, Forest Service Bureau of Land Management are the primary respondents to fires on federal lands. Let's see. Oh, nope, it's the one ahead of it. Emergency fire services are provided by the Battle Mountain and Austin Volunteer Fire Departments. That one. I'd like you also to add Kingston.
Okay.
In fact, Austin and Kingston probably both are on most of, any of our, our fires at all. They both show up. So that's the only change that I had on that.
That's a volunteer as well?
Right.
Anyone have any other?
The only concern.
On that section?
The two concerns that I have, number one, no spot zoning. We need to lasso that in.
Yeah, but that wouldn't be in this part. That, we, we would zero that in on the second phase, Commissioner, that he referred to.
And the, the other thing is, I've had people complaining. They have their camper's license and registered and they're not supposed to be parking it on the street. So if it's licensed and, and registered, I don't see any problems. So that, that was the, the only two concerns that we brought forward to make.
That would be in the second phase, too.
Yeah, and I, I think we're, so with phase two of this, the zoning code update, once this is adopted, we're, we've already, we've already got a head start on the zoning code. But we're, we're going to be coming back, probably more workshops like this. We're going to get into detail on, you know, if there's certain areas that the county wants to look at changing zoning or if there's certain things such as that that we want to clarify in code. But yeah, that'll all be coming as part of phase two. This is just specifically the master plan for right now, kind of the base for what we're going to do with phase two. Any other comments on the executive summary?
How about land use? Just don't be all day here. You guys have any comments on land use?
On land use, I do.
Okay, good. That's the important.
Yeah.
I want to zero in in half.
Okay, let's see. I think I'm on page one eighteen. Under development considerations. And it talks about, the very last sentence, the FEMA map should be amended to reflect these improvements. They're talking about the state has developed drainage improvements that should have eliminated the flood potential for Austin. Actually, this was all done in the last seven or eight years. I mean, we had a flood zone where they said seventy feet of water would come down off those mountains and go right through the middle of town. And so we worked very hard to, to address that. And my understanding was FEMA definitely had approved. So the FEMA map should reflect that. They have to reflect that because we actually got insurance for a couple of our businesses that could not get insurance because of the flood lane. So I know those FEMA maps were corrected because they actually bought insurance after we finished.
There was a flood in Austin?
Oh, years ago. But, but they claimed that because of the way it's situated, that FEMA still had, like I said, the wall of water would come down and, and, and it has years back in the eighteen hundreds or something, but, but we got that corrected. So, so that should reflect that. If you can double check.
Yeah, we'll double check. That could have just been a leftover from the old plan.
But it was seven or eight years ago that, at least, that we did something like that.
The old plan, I believe, was twenty-ten, so there's a good chance that that was carried over from the old master plan. And so it may be more current now.
I'm sure it was carried over.
So we'll, we'll double check.
You probably just carried it over, yeah.
Yeah, so we will definitely double check that.
And then, I see, I had, I had another one, too, on there. Let me look. Nope, not on that one. I'm fine.
Anybody else on land use?
So the next one is conservation and natural resources.
Yep.
On page, I think it's two-nine, they list the owners, feel out of power, territory, I believe, the format. And a few times ago, if I'm not mistaken.
What page was that, Brian?
Two-nine.
Two-nine.
Yeah, easy verify, but I'm pretty sure.
Anything else on this one?
Anything on housing?
Yes, I do on housing, and I don't know if we can do anything about it or not. That's one of the things that, that I brought up with us, doing our roads and, and the different homes and things. If you look on, under the housing, under three-point-three, it gives all the statistics, and I'm sure that's probably from the university. But our population of a hundred and thirteen.
What page are you wanting to?
It is so far wrong.
What page? What page, thirty-three?
Three, thirty.
Three-point-three, I'm sorry, yeah. I, I don't know if we've ever been that low, truly. I'm, I'm not sure where that came from. Maybe the census again because they didn't, you know, comply, but I, I don't know what we can do to change that. I did double check with our water department and we've got two-hundred-and-thirty-eight active water connections. So that leads me to believe we have more than a hundred and thirteen people. And then it says a hundred and one vacant. And that's what I had mentioned before on, to our, to Aaron and, and his group. They're phantom. We don't have a hundred and one vacant by any means. And I don't know how we ever correct that. Maybe with what he's doing, we might be able to. But I thought surely you can, can you find anything else that has us a little bit higher? This is so far off.
Yeah, I can, we can double check. And I mean, this data did come from the university, so.
Can we work like through the assessor or something? And can you put those numbers in, something like that?
If there's better data available, yeah, we could definitely update it. This was just what was available.
It does make us look like a ghost town, and I'm sorry, but we're not a ghost town yet. We're definitely rural or frontier, or whatever you call it, but it's not that bad. We're twice that.
Yeah, no, I'll look into it and we'll see if we can come up with some better numbers.
Another concern that was brought forward years ago was that some of the people in Austin would like it so that people could park camp trailers on their lots who live in Carson and Reno or whatever and need a place to go for the weekend. There was some considerable conversation about that. I mean, I, I know that's, that's going to be a zoning thing, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I know, out of smoke, I've seen what people do, and I, I don't want people just parking trash. But if you have ten, fifteen people coming on the weekend to Austin spending money, you know, it's, it's a help.
Well, the, you know, there's, there's two sides to everything and why they want to. But the bottom line of why they even put it in is because we didn't want Austin or Kingston or Gilman to look like a trailer park.
Yeah, I, I know.
So any more on housing? I think, I think you did a very good job. How about economic development?
You know, we, we had a chance to bring a company in here that was going to make vehicles for military. And we didn't go with it because basically we would be fronting the money for them to have land to work on their vehicles and space. I mean, how do you, how do you, how do you bring companies in? If you give them tax breaks, what do you do? I mean, we're depending on, on minerals here. And if for some reason minerals dropped, we, we would be definitely be in trouble. A lot of, a lot of the town would be anyway. So how do we invite industry?
You do things like we're doing plans on rail and.
Right. Right. Infrastructure.
We're, we're doing those things, Arthur. You're part of those conversations.
I'm so glad you cleared that up for me. No, we had a chance for a good industry to come in. They went someplace else.
I know, the rail. We got it, we're working on the rail.
Okay.
That's very, very important. And we have an opportunity.
And if, I will add, I mean, if there's something that you guys are doing that's not captured in the goals and policies now, that's something we could add to this master plan today if there's something specific.
And I think Art may be asking if you guys can come up with anything as well that may, that, that maybe is thinking outside of the box for us. You know, any, anything that we can discuss that maybe puts us ahead, the more minds that come to it, the better. And I think maybe that's where he's directing it.
Yeah, is there any way we can utilize the airport for a sample?
Yes.
I mean, we talked about an industrial park out there. That fell on its face. What kind of things can we do? We built hangars so people can park their aircraft when they're passing through or whatever, but.
I think it's all been kind of an infrastructure thing, which we've been working on. We've been putting infrastructure in. I think when you have the infrastructure, yeah, exactly, then it's how do you incentivize these industries to come to your.
I mean, our airport has long enough runways that, that any airplanes can be, can utilize them. We have to work on our, our freight capacity and our rail system.
Right.
If we can improve that, then we'll have the rail, we'll have the airport. And if we keep the water and sewer up, we can connect to these things. And that's what we've been working on. And, and if anybody has any other ideas, we welcome them. But that's the only way you can do it.
And you do have, so policy number ten has, talks about identify sites where additional rail use and development can occur. So you do have, I think there are some stuff in here that, you know, maybe they're a little bit more vague. But I mean, you definitely do have some stuff in here, goals and policy-wise, that kind of touch on some of that stuff. But maybe Bert and I, we can kind of all talk about if there's a policy or goal, I mean, may, maybe we can add to kind of bolster that.
For sure. We're just wondering if maybe if you, in your guys', you know, professional capacity, if you guys come across other things that, that maybe fits a community like ours that, that we aren't seeing, that is outside of rail or outside of, you know, things that are on the airport that, that we haven't explored. And like Art said, maybe some tax breaks or maybe some other things that are incentives that other communities are doing to, to kind of bolster their economy if we can't bring some of that thought process here and, and at least, at least have an idea to, to put it in front of this board and make a decision.
There was, there was talk about a slaughterhouse down on three-oh-five, between three-oh-five and Old Eight-A. I think that fell on its face last I heard. They were talking about it in Carson City. But that was the twenty thousand head. I don't think that we, we could afford the water for something like that. But those kinds of industries, you know.
Do they move, do they move livestock on rail?
Oh, yeah.
Look at that?
Sure.
Any other comments under economic development?
What was that, Cat?
Any other comments under this one?
No, I don't have any.
Public facilities.
I kept tipping this along.
Well, we heard from the fire hall today and they got to shave a half inch here and a half inch there. It's time to build a bigger fire company.
I agree with that. You've got volunteers that, you've got to get your fire, they deserve that, they deserve nice.
They deserve the best?
Yeah.
You, you guys will be seeing some of this before you enter a budget.
How's our storage facility, Bert?
Beautiful, handful.
Three months?
Yes, sir.
Six months?
Uh, over three, but I wouldn't go as far as six.
Okay, well.
But I would, I would, I would say a full three to five.
After the news this morning, that's probably a good thing.
Correct. Yes, and, and we, we even up, we even up the ante a little bit. We have a couple of solar wells in there as well that can be installed and, and produced continuously. So it's, it, it looks good and for, for the southern Hapar County as well.
Okay, excellent. I'm going to take off. I appreciate your indulgence again, my wife. She needs my attention.
How's she doing, Arthur?
Amazing. It's, it's just absolutely amazing because she can walk without, without a walker. She can.
That's good. Good for her.
Yeah. Okay, I see you're two, if I. Okay, I'll see you two if I can get back.
If not, you can, uh, you can access it by Zoom.
Myra, thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome.
Anything on public facilities?
So.
Every month.
Wait, I was wondering, uh, Aaron Martinez for the record. So I was wondering with Bert, if, if you thought this was appropriate. Under this section five dash fourteen, it talks about looking into the future. And I was wondering if it'd be prudent if we could get some of our, like, long-term earmark funding request projects and some of these long-term projects, um, listed on here that would ultimately get updated on that sewer and water facilities master plan. And what I think that these funding agencies look for is that our master plan and our water facilities master plan, they all talk about these same projects. So it looks like that we've planned for these projects so that we can try to obtain potential grant funding in, in the future. And so it looks really good as a project portfolio, the master plan and the water facilities master plan, all point to the same long-term vision. And so with your, uh, approval, I'd like to issue that list to, to Derek here and, and try to get some of the hard-pointed projects on there that we might wanna target in the future. What are your thoughts?
Wow, that's spot on. I'm glad Aaron brought that up. This is something that's evolving again. We're learning as we go, but it's huge for the application of grants. If, if they see all these projects that were, that we have a five-year plan, or we're executing our one or two years, and, and where we have that rolling portfolio, they wanna give you the grant money. Um, it's something that I've just learned in the last month, but it's, it's, has endless grant money opportunities if we provide them that portfolio. Without that portfolio, they feel like we're just coming forward with a wish list that we may never execute. So I, I really appreciate that comment. I think that it's, it's spot on for what we need to accomplish here. And, and it's right to what Art was.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. So we will add that.
Yep, I'll, I'll work for there.
Well, are there a couple more things that you wanna add to, to an update of, like, your fire hall?
Well, that will come before you guys have budget. And the second that we have budget for it, we will.
No, but if we include it as part of our master plan, that's what I'm saying.
For sure, Derek, we'll get all of it. Our whole, uh, we'll give them our water and sewer, which is, is due to be updated. Um, so we're reaching out. I think Johnny right now is working with getting a new, um, water and sewer master plan update. The last one ju, the last five year one just kind of went by the, it, it's up. Um, and so we can, we can facilitate all of our master plans together to give us more direction here.
It does. It, when you say it's part of our master plan, when you go for a grant, it does help.
Now it's time to get it in.
Anything else?
I don't see anything else.
No, we're gonna call for a motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are all the comments.
Perfect.
We'll move on to, uh.
Well, we need a motion on eleven, so I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed draft master plan, um, with noted changes.
One second.
Thank you for coming out today, Eric. We appreciate you.
Okay. The motion's been, uh, made and seconded.
Yeah, no, I agree. Hundred percent agree.
Okay, in a path. Move on to twelve.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Correspondence reports future agenda items.
So I do have an item coming up for you guys that I wanna put on the, um, I believe it's twenty fourths agenda of next month for a potential master plan for rail to be presented and us possibly adopt that and, and start moving forward with it. Um, the, the quotes I have right now are around a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty-five thousand to get this master plan in place. It'd, it'd be something else that kind of pigtails on to what, what we have here. And, and it is the one thing I think that our county has that could be special outside of minerals and, and take some of our dependency on the net proceeds office if, if we move forward on it. If we have a unique opportunity in land camp. Very much. So, so I would, so I'd like to put that on, um, with the commission's kind of blessings on that.
And that's for March twenty-fourth, Bert?
Yes, sir.
Can we, uh, this next agenda, were the, possibly the twenty-fourth, can we relook at the, to repeal the ordinance for, um, night shooting?
You bet.
I've had a couple people reach out, and they'd like to.
You bet. And, uh, and I will actually ask Carly to reach out to them boards and see if, if they did have any discussion because we did ask them to give us their opinion as a board.
Yep.
And now they've had more than a month to convene and, and discuss it, so we can kind of get the collective opinion of everybody.
So when you, uh, so if, if you do decide on which, uh, meeting in March it'll be, just let me know, and then I'll follow up with the, the two people that have reached out, Jimmy.
You got it.
What is the date of our first meeting in March?
Fourteenth.
I believe tenth.
Tenth.
I'm a professional. I throw them wrong dates.
March tenth. Um, Counselor, I have a question on the, um, the report that's due on our county indigent, indigent defense plan. It's due, what the first made, does that have to come before the commissioners?
I don't believe it does. It's, it's, uh, it's a report that we are obligated to do under our plan.
Okay.
And we have.
So does your office just compile it and send it in?
Don't make it that. See, what we have is under our plan. The district attorney's office and the judiciary don't have anything to do with it. Who ha, what ha, it's Lakin who is the designee from the indigent de, defense.
Oh, okay.
Committee. She's their designee. So she deals with them. So whenever anyone has any questions or observations toward the committee, they can just go to Lakin.
Go to Lakin.
And, and.
So she just files the plan. There's anything we have to do.
So we did make Lakin our designee, and, uh, and we increased her pay by five thousand, but it saved us it, putting a whole new employee in that position for the limited use that it, that it takes. That's part of our plan. So by the plan, she's the one that's supposed to respond, so Ted and, and everybody doesn't get mixed up in it.
And you said our, our meeting is at two o'clock this afternoon?
Yes.
That's on. Did you send us the information on how to access that?
Yes, you should have a Zoom link. And I will put it back on top of your email, so you can, uh, so you can connect.
And, um, what, does it matter if it's the tenth or the, um, twenty-fourth, if they can get a guide on the library as far as programming and what program we decided and all that stuff?
They do have a program over there now that they're, that they're using. Um, I don't have enough information on that program. Need to bring the professionals in to report on that as opposed to me, truthfully.
Also, if we do the, uh, the one is, uh, item I was discussing, if we, uh, because we need to do more work on the Lickens water rights, that type of stuff, right? Can we put those on the same? Because we might have some people in our audience. Or yes?
Yeah, so the Endow will not take ownership of that until the fourth.
Till the fourth.
Till the fourth. And so we won't even start.
Fourth of March?
Yes, yes. So we won't even start the, uh, the process of the paperwork with Endow and, and renegotiating the, the water rights. So that, we might bump that out to the twenty-fourth. So maybe the night hunting would be best on the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah. Till the twenty-fourth.
Do we have any more public comment?
Molly Gonzalez, Landmark County Clerk. I just wanted to do a public comment for you guys, kind of as a, um, help, if you guys wanna kind of help get it out there. Um, AB three twenty-one made where Nevada is an all-mellon county state. I mean, um, they did come up with a mail preference form that you can submit if you know you wanna mail, um, come and vote in person. If you submit this form by April fifteenth, um, you won't get a ballot mailed to your house. Um, you'll be able to come in and vote. Also, if you get a ballot in the mail and you didn't meet that deadline, you can still come in and surrender your ballot and still, um, vote on the machines. We got our new equipment. Um, we're gonna start training, um, next month in March, so it'll be a crazy. Precincts one through five can do the opt-out. Um, six through nine will still stay the mellon, because it's been designated a mellon county. Um, also, um, we have done discussion of moving the location of our election from the civic center to this meeting room here at the courthouse with the new, um, same-day registration and being able to vote. In the past election, when they would show up to wanna vote, we'd have to send them over here to the courthouse because you do have to come to the clerk's office to, um, fill out your registration and be able to vote same day. That way it'll eliminate us making people go back and forth. It would all be one general location. To do something like that, I don't know if you guys would want an agenda item on something like that to discuss, or if you guys are good with public comment.
Like, there's, there's no cameras at. At the civic center, correct?
Are there cameras at the civic center?
There's no cameras where they vote.
I don't know if there is enough.
No, there isn't. They, and there's cameras here. This, this was constructed to handle our voting, correct?
But per NRS, we cannot record a location.
Right.
And I have talked to the state about that, and they are good with us covering, like putting a cover over that camera.
That's where I was getting to.
Yeah, I have already talked to the state about that as well.
Okay.
And so, um.
We will just turn off the cameras in that room where they do vote, but all the remaining cameras throughout the courthouse, one on the parking lot, everything else will be on. It just can't be in the room that they actually vote.
It would, um, that way we could utilize all of the, um, staff of the clerk's office, because we'll all be in one location, and it won't be sending people back and forth like we've had to with the same-day voter registration.
Did you say that, that si, like six, seven, and eight, they can't opt out?
They cannot, because they've already been designated a mellon county. One through five wasn't. So they can opt out from one through five. Six, six through.
But they can still come in and vote in person?
One through five?
Six through.
Six through nine won't be able to vote on our express vote machine, but they could come in and bring their ballot and put their ballot.
Right.
But it would still have to be on a.
It would have to be on a.
So six, seven, and eight strictly a mellon ballot?
It always has been.
So where is, uh?
Yes. Yes, it's always been a mellon.
That is Austin, that's?
That's the Austin. Yeah, that's always been. It's.
Well, not always.
Well, no, not always, but for a long time. That was before AB three twenty-one that made the whole state a mellon.
Yes, we're, we're all mellon.
But they can still come in and surrender their ballot and vote on the machine. No, they can't even do that.
They cannot. Only one through five can do that.
Oh, wow.
They, they can personally drop off their ballot. That's all.
Correct.
That doesn't even make sense. Just saying.
They, they took the rights of us voting in person away and did this all-mellon ballot. That's exactly what they did.
Yes.
Um, and they don't allow us to vote anywhere else.
That's right. Did, how can that, it's incredible.
Do you remember when that happened, Patsy? Do you remember when that happened? How long ago? When was it?
When was it?
It was, uh.
Oh, when it was actually done, um, goodness sakes, it's almost thirty years ago.
Yeah, it's been a long time. Yeah. And, um, also, we've, um, recently created a Landmark County Clerk, um, Facebook page, because I know a lot of social media is out there to kind of get some of this information out as well.
Perfect.
Nice, very nice. Thank you.
Do we have any more public comment?
No, I will send everybody that link. So, uh, two o'clock, we do have the weather modification, uh, presentation. If you guys have any questions, um, please don't, um, ask there. Please send me something so I can ask prior because we, we are all attending one meeting. We're not, wanna break that open meeting law.
Do not, do not submit any questions.
You bet.
Send them a mirror.
It looks like we're done, huh? Huh? I need a motion for a gen. Okay, well, so. Meeting's done.
All those in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor, you have to ask?
All in favor.
Hi.
Okay. All earned.
This conference.
Yes, ma'am.